Good evening, colleagues and audience members. My name is Ed Reichsinger. I am the chairman of the Land Use and Transportation Committee for the Baltimore City Council. We are here this evening to conduct our 23rd work session on City Council Bill 12-0152, Transform Baltimore Zoning. During our 22nd work session held on Wednesday, February 11th, we worked on Title 16, Off-Streets, Parking, and Loading. Today, we will continue our review of Title 17, which is signed, starting on line one of page 280, and work on it as much as we can during today's session in two hours. The Land Use and Transportation Committee intends to work progressively through the bill by reviewing it page by page, starting with Title 1 and continuing through the bill in order it is written. City agencies and public will be asked to participate by raising their questions or comments as the committee is discussing the page. They have a comment or question regarding that title, or if you have amendments. I encourage everyone to visit the city council's website, www.baltimorecitycouncil.com, to stay updated with the section of the bill and the land use transportation committees working on at each work session. If you are unable to attend the scheduled work sessions and you wish to provide written comments or amendments, please merit to the Office of Council Services, attention to Jennifer Coats at 100 North Holiday Street, Baltimore, Maryland 21202, or you can email Jennifer at jennifer.coats@baltimorecity.com. My one and only grand rule is please turn off your cellphones, Androids, iPhones, to give courtesy and respect to those who are going to testify. We start off with introductions. Standing to my far left is Councilwoman Nick Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To his right is Councilwoman Sharon Gray Middleton. Second to my left is Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark. To my immediate left is Councilman Jim Craft, the vice chair of the committee. We're also joined by Angela Gibson, who is here somewhere representing Mayor Stephanie Rollins Blake. We're also joined by Karen Kunst and Paul Plymouth, representing President of the City Council, Bernard Jack Young. We're also joined by Councilwoman Ricky Spector. To my right is the staff person to the Land Use Committee, Jennifer Coats. Okay, so when we get to amendments, first, as courtesy, is to the committee that has amendments on the Land Use Committee. So, right now, we are starting on page 280, Title 17, Signs, Subtitle 1, Purpose of Titles, Definition. So, it's line 3, 17-101, Purpose. Does anyone have any amendments to this? To this?
No.
Any of my colleagues? Okay, no one has anything on page 280. Now, we are going to page 281. We're now on page 282. No one with page 282. Page 283. No amendments or comments on page 283. Page 284. Page 284. Okay. Now, we're on page 285. That's Councilwoman Clark. Page 285.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, on 285, line 20, if I may, basically, these are general design and construction provisions, and how they should be illuminated, et cetera. And under D4, "All sign illumination must be designed, located, shielded, and directed so as to prevent casting glare or direct light on adjacent publicly dedicated roadways and surrounding properties, and distraction of motorists or pedestrians in the public right of way." And then, it says, "This paragraph 4 does not apply to digital billboards." And I would recommend deleting that sentence.
The, I understand the recommendation. My only comment regarding that is, the nature of a digital billboard, I believe, is that it does distract. I mean, I'm just saying that when the digital billboard, if I'm thinking of a digital billboard, if you're driving up 83, or if you're driving out 95, I mean, digital billboard actually, it's changing as you're driving. And I think the fact that the billboard changes in and of itself while it's changing is a distraction, because the, you know, you may be, you may see it out of the corner of your eye, and at one second, it's advertising the Ravens game, and at the next section, it's advertising Maryland Live, and at the next section, it's advertising hot dogs, or whatever.
But, basically, oh, I'm sorry. We'll be televised, so you want to use the microphone?
Thank you. There is a separate section on billboards later on in the title, where we could address any additional billboard issues. But, I'm saying that, so, "Distraction of motorists or pedestrians in the public right of way is prohibited," but that doesn't apply to the digital billboards. And you're saying, "Well, how can you say that? They are distracting." So, it doesn't apply to them. And I'm saying, I'd rather not have something in this code that says, basically, they're not, they don't have to, they can be distracting, and...
So, well, let me, I guess what I'm saying, when, yeah, no, I guess what I'm saying, though, is, if you say that it does not apply to digital billboards, then by definition, as I would interpret it, you would effectively be banning digital billboards. Because if you said, "All sign illumination must be designed, located, shielded, and directed so as to prevent, A, casting glare or direct light on adjacent publicly dedicated roadways and surrounding properties, and B, distraction of motorists or pedestrians in the public right of way." If it is designed, located, shielded, and directed so as to prevent distraction of motorists or pedestrians, if you don't exempt digital billboards, then what I'm saying is, I think you are effectively banning them.
Well, I wouldn't mind doing that, but I think that's a leap for, you know, a Wednesday night at the, you know, looking at the code. However, let me say this. If you skip ahead, so, in other words, you're right. I'm saying they should not be distracting, and I don't want them exempted from that requirement of not being distracting. Now, they are distracting. Billboards are distracting. But if you go forward to page 295, which we'll get to, that what you'll see, but let me say this. What you'll see is that there are some restrictions on how often a digital billboard can change its message, et cetera, which is working in the direction of trying to make them less distracting, and therefore, there might be other things that we could also add, and so, I don't want them exempted.
May I make a suggestion?
But all this is, is the definition. All this is, is the definition section.
No, this isn't the, this is discussing illumination.
Illumination, definition of illumination.
May I make a suggestion that on line 20, rather than deleting that phrase, say, "This paragraph does not apply to digital billboards," C-section, and then refer forward for standards on digital billboards, and then if you want to change the language there. So, at least, it makes it more obvious to the reader.
That's fine with me. That's fine with me, just so, there are standards that they are applying later on to reduce the impact. Okay, I can live with that one. Just remember that I lived with one.
I marked it down.
Was it?
Okay, Amendment, Amendment 2, Councilwoman, on the same page, what's your, 22 and 30, 23?
Right, sorry. On that same page, lines 22 and 23, I'm just exempting, well, first of all, it lists certain districts, zoning districts, where illuminated cabinet box wall signs are prohibited. And what I've done is, I just made a typo correction where B1, B2 was put in, which is outdated. But I've added for prohibition against illuminated cabinet box signs, C1 slash C1 VC, and C2, IMU, DMU. I've added them to what the draft enumerates. And they would all be prohibited to have in those districts illuminated cabinet box wall signs. So, I've added districts.
We are joined by Councilman Warren Branch, to my far left, and Councilman Bill Henry sits on the chair. Okay, so, that's Amendment 2, which is noted, noted. Anyone else on page 285? 286? Anyone on, any on page 286? Before I go on the next page, I apologize. We also, I don't know whether I announced here, we have John Willis, who is here as the attorney representing the Land Use and Transportation Committee. Thanks, John. Page 288.
Did you want to mention classic signs? That's 288.
No, not, yeah, I'm good. 288.
I'm grateful. Thank you.
280, 289. Law, unless you want to say something, but I mean, it's, you know, it's just a process. Page 288.
Yeah, just to explain, since it came up as a question earlier, the, this code provides for a new tool called classic signs. It was, it was written essentially to protect dominoes sugar, but it may help others, and that is a non-conforming sign. It's larger than what would be permitted. So, they have the opportunity here to be a classic sign, just by application, as long as they commit to maintaining it. And that way, if, you know, it was struck by lightning, or whatever, they could rebuild it. And it's just a new tool.
So, would that occur as regards to Councilman Craft's district, Natty Boe?
Any sign, the criteria we put in here is 25 years old. And I don't think the Natty Boe sign in the, on the Brewers Hill Building is non-conforming, but I could double-check that. But it's citywide. It would just be anything over 25 years old.
As Councilwoman Clark said, by the time we adopt it, it will be 25 years old.
There you go.
That's it.
For the listeners, the audience, or television, that was a joke. It's not, it's not going to take that long. Page 289. Yeah, we're still, huh? Councilman Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually had a question about the temporary banners, 17-503. I had been asked by a constituent if the, there is a prohibition against putting banners over some streets, and was that a zoning code issue? Because I don't see it in the new code, or is that somewhere else in the code?
No, that is not a zoning issue. There's, the city has a policy for the banners on their poles through DGS.
Okay, but that's, that's DGS policy, and if that was going to be dealt with, that can be dealt with, doesn't, that's not a legislative thing. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, we're on page 290. 290? 2, 291? Councilman Henry, page 292?
Non-commercial or political signs. There is separate, there's separate...
What line?
I'm sorry, this is lines 1 through 13, non-commercial or political signs. It, it says that they're exempt from sign permit requirements subject to the following regulations, and then goes on to list several in lines 6 through 13. The existing code references sizes. Is that being deliberately omitted?
No, I don't know that that's in existing zoning code. If it is, then we should put it here. I thought that was regulated elsewhere, the size.
That was my question.
I remember there was an alteration to that a number of years ago. But no, it was not intentionally omitted. If, if it's in the current zoning code, it should carry over, but I don't think it is.
Yeah, Mr. Willis may have some more information on this, but I think there was some litigation about the size on political signs, and I think that part of that ruling was about, not the size of the sign, but about whether that size interfered with view corridors, or other things like that. So, I think it wasn't a question of being able to determine how big the sign could be, but it was more like where it could be located, and how it could be located. Is that correct?
Do any of those regulations lie in zoning code? I don't...
Well, my question, the reason I'm, the reason I'm phrasing my question this way is because it says, "They're exempt from sign permit requirements subject to the following regulations." And I just want to be clear that, that if there is additional language in the code elsewhere outside zoning that regulates size of the sign, when they can be up, when they have to be down, if all of that information is somewhere else in the code other than zoning, it should be referenced. That's all.
I don't know where that is, those size requirements. I believe they exist.
I guess it's Councilman Curran knows exactly.
Yeah, Mr. Curran knows the page and line.
Does anyone else beside Councilman Curran?
It's, it's in the code, and I'll find it for you if you want to reference it. It's a completely separate section on political signs that was amended recently. I'll find it.
And the, the section on when the signs can go up and come down, that section, there's also a case that threw that out also.
Right, and at the time of, of the city council bill, that case hadn't been decided. It was, you know, it'd been filed, but not really decided. So, that would have an impact on whether or not the existing language would be considered void or not.
But I think the point here would be simply to make the cross-reference, and if it needs to be fixed elsewhere.
Okay, yeah, cross-reference, thank you. Any other colleagues on page 292?
Mr. Chairman? And, and Councilman Craft, the other thing that needs to be checked and cross-referenced is, I know state highway, so if there are, they have certain prescriptions on state rights of way, that even if, and it may extend to private property. Other municipalities have had trouble, most recently Mount Airy, with size of signs. And I might suggest that on line 13, that you just put the period after event, as opposed to after campaign, and take out the challenge, potential challenge.
So, delete campaign?
Or, yeah, delete or campaign, just ended after event.
I got it.
Makes sense.
Ms. Floyd, page 292, you're good, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just an observation, that when I was reading this, on line nine of this page...
Line nine?
Line nine. One of the best things we're, we're doing right now, on a minimal level, is street-sweeping signs, and if we couldn't put street-sweeping signs on public property, we would have absolutely no success with street-sweeping whatsoever. That's just an observation. You know, they come up, they go up, and they come down in a very timely manner. They're not, you know, and...
No, I get it. Planning?
Again, we drafted this, as we've said before, we drafted all this based on the assumption that the right of way was exempt. So, if that's not the case, that would have to be another piece that...
Right, and as, as we've said before, you just pick which one you want. Either there's, you can make your zoning code applicable across the board, or you can exempt your rights of way. So, it's up to you, how you want to do it. If you do exempt the rights of way, then it wouldn't matter what it says here. If you want to include the rights of way as being subject to your own zoning code, then you'd probably want to amend this section.
Anyone else on page 292?
I just have a, title, page 292, line 28, says, "The sign is displayed." You shouldn't say, "The sign or display." You should commit to more. Line 28.
You got to use the, you got...
I did. I used the microphone.
Okay, so...
It's a typo.
Okay. That's the, the English teacher in your voice.
Well, it's, otherwise, it doesn't make sense.
I get it.
The English teacher in me, I hope, is still at least a little bit there. It was a good part of, that was a good part of me.
We are now on page 293, which is Councilwoman Clark has an amendment.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chair. These are about real estate signs. These are, this whole, God bless you, section is all about real estate signs. I have two amendments relevant, and in both cases, I'm reducing size. On line 293, excuse me, page 293, line 1, residential and OR, that's office residential districts, single-family, rowhouse, and multifamily, 19 or fewer units, and unimproved lots. Amend to reduce the maximum allowable height of a real estate sign. The sign may not exceed six square feet in area, or three, I'm saying three feet in height, instead of six.
Okay.
All right, next, on the same page, line 8, amend to reduce the maximum allowable square footage and height of real estate signs. The sign may not exceed, it says now, "The sign may not exceed 36 square feet in area, or six feet in height." I'm taking it down to, "May not exceed 16 square feet in area, or four feet in height." I'm thinking of residential neighborhoods where, where the, the maximum height would, you couldn't find the front door to go in and buy the house.
This doesn't, this section does not apply to residential neighborhoods?
Oh, that's right. It's all other districts, well...
I think the real estate community would have a problem with going down as small as 16 square feet.
Okay, well, I, when I wrote this, I knew it was the business community. I just forgot when I talked about it, sorry. But, I'd like to stick with my recommendation, and, and I'd be glad to accept, you know, comments from the affected people.
Your, your amendment's noted.
Thank you.
Anyone else on page 293? Okay, we are now on page 280, 294, Councilwoman Clark.
I have not an amendment, but I have a question or a comment, and I wrote it out so it would be as clear as possible. The section, 294, beginning line 8 to 34, which is alcoholic beverage and cigarette advertising signs, goes to the bottom of that page and covers the first seven lines on the next page. It's full of regulations about advertising cigarettes and tobacco. Okay. So, I, I find the following, that the sections, and I don't know if I'm reading it right, this section seems to exempt premises that are licensed to sell alcohol, and those that are certified or licensed by the state to sell cigarettes. It seems to exempt those stores from the prohibition against advertising alcohol and cigarettes in any publicly visible location. Now, that's how I read it. I may be wrong. This is, but what I write is, "This is the time to review line-by-line exemptions with the law department, clarify what generic description means on line 32, and propose as many stricter standards for publicly visible signage by licensed liquor and cigarette establishments as legally possible in neighborhoods that I'm honored to represent." I have, if I can get, this issue of what signs can be posted in, for example, a, a carryout liquor establishment, or, or, this says cigarette licenses too, so, any cornered store. Half the time, people are frustrated by the establishment itself, but they go berserk because they, even though they're not going in that establishment, they're looking at the, what's in the window, and it offends them, and I want to make sure that within the constitutional bounds, we are sure to look at this section, and make sure we've done the best we can to, to limit the kinds and the proportion of advertising. Thank you.
I think, and I looked a lot for a little assistance here, but yes, this probably would be the section. This, just so you know where this, this came pretty much as it is from the current code, and it was focused, because I know you remember when the city first outlawed...
Yep.
...alcohol and cigarettes on billboards, and then went back and outlawed all new billboards. Alcohol and cigarettes on billboards, and then went back and outlawed all new billboards. So it was kind of a two-part piece of legislation. So this was generally written to be, you can't do this advertising on billboards, and then crafted to say these exceptions would be, which would be the places that wouldn't fall into billboards because the product is sold there. So I think you are correct, this probably would be the place to be stricter if you want the signage to be stricter than would otherwise be permitted in a general retail establishment. So in other words, this...
It seems to be more generous than what is permitted.
It's not really saying any sizes or anything here, as much as...
It does, later.
As much as it's where you can have the advertising, so I think if you want to be more restrictive, this probably would be the place.
No, no, that's just for neon signs.
Where, where, Councilwoman?
Yeah, so there's not a whole lot, I think you are correct, there is not a whole lot of restriction on the area. But just so you understand, it does not exempt the business from the general size of signs. So this would be over, anything you add here would be over and above, so I think if you want to talk about, you know, that taped into the window stuff, or whatever, this would be the place to do it.
Right, that's why I stopped us here, if we could.
Hillary, you want to respond to that, then Councilman Mosby has.
Sure, under the current code, and I think the intention in this new code is the same, you can't advertise a product on a sign unless it's sold at the place the sign is located.
You mean if you're...
That's the general outdoor advertising ban. So right away, this applies only to establishments that sell the alcohol and tobacco, and then these other restrictions would come in. But I think, as Laurie was saying, it's in some ways extremely redundant of the rule that already exists. I mean, so you can't put up an alcohol or tobacco sign, just like you couldn't put up a Nike shoe sign, on a premises that doesn't sell that product.
Okay, but, okay.
So once you get to that location, if you sell the product on the premises, then this is also describing what you can do. So like if you sell soup at a restaurant, you can put a A-frame sign out front that says soup sold here.
Well, you can't right now, but we, after this code is...
Well, if it's in whatever the, you know, whatever you're, within the other restrictions, your sign can't be huge, it can't be whatever. So this is already just restricting it to the locations where it's sold.
But what I'm saying is, do we have to do that?
What do you mean?
Well, I mean...
Yes, I mean...
We have prohibited, for example, we have prohibitions against signs for alcohol and signs for cigarettes. We have that, but we're saying they're, we're saying, I think, that they're allowed to be posted on the windows, in the windows, of licensed liquor or licensed cigarette sales, retail sellers.
Right, if you, if you take that away, you'll run into the problem of interfering with their business. I mean, so...
Not necessarily.
I can research the constitutional, you know, pro, you know, the limits there, but this would be, you know, prohibiting a retailer from advertising the products it sells. And there are some restrictions, but there's going to be some state and federal limits to the, our ability to get rid of them.
You see, I think the problem is, and I agree with you, Councilwoman Mary Pat, is based off of, I guess, the generous lack of restrictions associated with liquor store outlets. If I could make maybe a suggestion, I kind of like on line 33, 34, and continuance onto page 295, line 1 and 2, when we talk about any neon or electronic charge sign that is on a licensed premise and installed inside a window, as long as the total of all window signs where the premises are temporary, but not counting window displays, is no more than 25% of the window area. This will allow, like, licensed alcohol and tobacco establishments to, like you're saying, market their particular service. However, you know, in many places in East and West Baltimore, the entire window is covered with it. So one, again, it's friendly to allow the businesses to license, I mean, to market whatever they would like to market, however, it cuts down on them putting it on the side of the building, it cuts down on them doing other creative things of basically essentially creating their building into a billboard.
Right, and as long as you have reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions, you can regulate these signs, so long as they're content neutral. And so you get into the fine line of a liquor or tobacco establishment saying to you, well, my sign has to be smaller because that's the type of product I sell, that's discriminating, you know, if I sold bubble gum, I wouldn't have this problem. So you just, you know, I'm happy to research it and make sure we're on whatever that line is, so that we're making the signs as small as possible without running into whatever the state and federal prohibitions are.
If I can make a suggestion, colleagues, and to the law department, I would like to see the amendment associated with alcohol and cigarette establishments, again, to conform with line 33, 34, and continuance to page 295, 1 and 2, that basically says you can place it on the building in the frontage of windows, no more than 25% of the entire window area.
May I add an amendment to your amendment?
Yeah.
May I? What it seems to be saying to me is, if you've got a neon or electric sign in your window on a licensed place, you can do that, but it cannot, it cannot...
Exceed.
But it cannot exceed 25% of the square footage of your windows, but not counting window displays. In other words, you're not counting what else is in the window.
Yeah, so the whole point of saying conforming with it was not to completely restrict it out of saying we can't place it in the window, basically to her point, she was saying that it would be, you know, against, I guess, fair business practices, to make them remove everything that they're trying to market inside of the store. Mary Pat, if you could listen real quick, what I was saying is, just to say that at the end of the day, 25% of that particular window can't exceed, you can't exceed more than 25% in that particular window with marketing of alcohol or tobacco in the store, period.
That's what I wanted to say.
Yes.
I don't think it does quite yet.
Well, it doesn't say anything because we don't have an amendment.
Okay, one more thing to point to the council's attention. The regulations for temporary signs, those, you know, paper ones that often go in the inside of the windows, are in section 17-515, page 293, lines 27 through 30. And these would apply to all businesses, you know, and what we say there is that they are limited to no more than 25% of the total window area.
Where do we define temporary sign?
Temporary signs is the entire section of, well, there's two categories of temporary signs.
Two, 292, page 297, subtitle 7.
Temporary signs.
But where are we?
Exempt, subtitle 5 is exempt signs. So subtitle 5 on page 289 refers to all signs that do not require a permit. So that's subtitle 5, starting on page 289. So these are all the kinds of signs that you don't have to come down and get a permit for. One of those kinds are 5-15, which are window signs temporary, and they are described there.
What is it?
It also includes things like, you know, your house numbers and your yard sale, you know, there's a whole bunch of signs that we're not requiring a permit for.
Right.
These are some of them, but it does limit their size. If they go bigger than this, then they have to get a permit.
Okay.
I don't want to be technical, but on 289, line 22, this is banners, is that consistent with sign?
That's a type of exempt sign.
Correct, so, but when we go over to page 294, 295, and we're talking about...
Excuse me, one second, he's got to have the microphone.
I'm sorry.
Remember, this is being taped also, so you got to have the microphone for the taping.
I was, I don't want to be too technical, but when we talked about the definition of what a temporary sign was, I think we went back to 289 and looked at line 22, which is banners and temporary banners, that might not perceive to be consistent with what a temporary sign is, right? Like, what's the definition of, to utilize in saying that, where we talked about temporary signs, what's the definition of what a temporary sign is, is what I was getting at?
Well, it's under the section of exempt sign, not, but if you look under banners, the definition of banners on page 281, banner signs may be permanent or temporary in nature. A permanent banner sign is a banner sign displayed more than 30 days. So that's the difference.
Yeah, but we're not talking about banners.
Yeah, but we're talking about, what I'm saying is, when you go back to 293...
Yeah.
Line 25, and we talked about window signs, temporary window signs, you could assume that that's not necessarily consistent with temporary banners, right? Or am I wrong?
Right, go back to the definition on window signs.
I think that we still, what I'm trying to say is, I think we need to drill down on what we're saying a window sign is, specific to display in commercial building spaces.
Okay, well, I think what we should do then is go back to the definitions section, which is 102, starts on page 102, we have a...
We're on a, we gotta remember, we'll be in tape, we're on TV.
If it, if it makes sense to the committee, maybe what we should suggest right in the definitions is temporary is always 30 days or less.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, and that would cover, then you don't have to put it in every...
Exactly.
...section. So I think that would just go in under the definitions, it would be on probably page 283 alphabetically, for the purpose of the signage section, temporary is defined as 30 days or less.
Thank you. We have Councilwoman Middleton, Councilwoman Henry.
I keep seeing this, I want to talk about this 25%. Where is that coming from? Remember, we're updating something from 40 years, and the 25% is not working, so why can't we, why can't we only allow them 15% of the window? And that's gonna prob, you know, and you could change the 25% in both places to 15 or even 20, we can discuss the amount unless...
Certainly, that's up to the committee. We looked at these areas, we looked at storefronts, and that's how we arrived at the 25%. You know, whether, you know, I don't know that it's a perfect science, and so, you know, I think you just have to think about the average window opening, you know, an average sort of rowhouse storefront, the window opening's likely to be something around, you know, 12 feet by maybe eight feet or seven feet. So, you know, you do the math and you come up with a sign size, and that's kind of how we got to it.
And not just the neon sign, I'm talking about the, you know, the alcohol and liquor and wine and whatever, that advertisement as well, there's, we should all make a certain percentage for all of them.
Well, and, you know, I think we just have, the committee should just decide, if we agree that temporary signs are 30 days, and then decide what falls under, you know, if you're not worried about the less than 30 days, then the others go in the temp, go in the window sign section and apply to all window signs.
All signs.
That way, I think we get to what the law department's concern is, that you don't differentiate. If you treat the grocery store signs the same as the cigarette signs, you don't get into a question.
Yeah, that's certainly, if you make it for every single window sign, then you won't have an issue. If you want to single out tobacco and alcohol, then you probably will, and there's a line somewhere.
Because people, you know, when, if it's a liquor store, people know what's in a liquor store. A grocery store, we know, they have to go into the store and cer, and, you know, it covers multiple items.
Now, Councilman Henry, then Councilman Craft.
Thank you. We don't have a definition for window display, as separate, as, it's a distinct term, but it's not defined separately from window sign.
Okay.
So we either need to have a definition of what a window display is, or we need to remove it. And the second point I was going to make is, just to share with my colleagues, that in some of the urban renewal areas, there are already, there's already this requirement of no more than 25% for any signage in any of the retail establishments. And one of the things that's been clear from that is that the problem is not the 25%, the problem is enforcement of the 25%. 25% of the total window area is not an unreasonable number. The problem is that there are very few stores that hold to it. And when you drive along the commercial corridors, what you'll see is, you'll either see stores that have made a commitment to not putting signage in their windows at all, and those look beautiful because there's nothing in them. And then there's stores that put signs in their window, and when they do put signs in their window, they don't care about trying to keep a particular, you know, percentage, and we don't do, we don't press that in terms of zoning enforcement. And I wouldn't be surprised if one of the things that has made that difficult in the past is the sort of fuzziness between temporary signs and permanent signs. So I think that if we make it just a flat 25% for all signs, for all business, it'll be easy to enforce for zoning enforcement. It shouldn't get us into any constitutional issues, and we can move on to the next section.
It is, actually, I just checked both sections. Temporary is on page 293, line 27, at 25%, and the permanent are on page 311, under permanent signs, at the same 25%. So as drafted, both temporary and permanent are limited to 25%.
So that's 50%.
No. It's a total. Because the definition under the permanent says it has to include the temporary. So it's a total of 25%.
Are you putting an amendment, or you just giving a reference?
The way, the way I would frame that, and I don't care if this is, you know, an amendment to Councilman Mosby's amendment, or what, but I think that if we eliminate the term window display in the existing definition, so we're just talking about window signs, and we eliminate the distinction between permanent and temporary, then we can just ask for a no more than 25% across the board for all businesses, all products, all signage on all windows, and I think we should be good to go. And we can, and we can point to the fact that that is a standard that some businesses in the city already have to meet in the urban renewal areas, which won't get us into a separate fight that the 15% or the 20% would get us into, because that would actually be a reduction of what even they're allowed at this point.
The only reason, I'm not disagreeing with any of that, I think it says that the only reason to keep the distinction between permanent and temporary is the temporary, as it's written, is exempt from the permit. If it's less than 30 days, you don't have to get a permit. So I think there is benefit, I don't think we want to clog the permit system with, I'm taping something in my window for 30 days.
Councilman Craft, then Councilman Mosby.
Yeah.
Councilman Craft?
I was wondering about the need of the amendment, because when I look at the area that Councilman Mosby was talking about before, when you were going on the bottom of page 294, and on the top of page 295, we were talking about the total of all window signs, whether permanent or temporary. So we're talking about all window signs, so whether you had a tobacco sign, or an alcohol sign, or a sub sign, or a gas sign, or whatever, when you total... when you total all those signs together, as I would read it, you're limiting the usage of the space to 25 percent of the window area. So we're not putting the restriction as to what can be displayed on that 25 percent. The retailer is making the decision as to which of his or her products they want to place on that 25 percent collectively for all of the window space. All we're saying is, when you add all this together, the cig, the tobacco, the alcoholic beverage, whatever, the totality cannot exceed 25 percent. And I think Councilman Henry, I think really it nailed the issue in the sense of, it's really about enforcement. I mean, every one of us can drive down, you know, and Councilwoman Middleton was showing us pictures the other day of, of some places in her district where you can't see out the window because of all the stuff that's plastered over them. And finally, on the window displays, you know, the window display, I think, is, is an issue that needs to be dealt with because, I mean, when I think of a window display, think about Saks Fifth Avenue at Christmas time. The entire window is a display. They have a Christmas thing. Well, there's nothing to say that someone could not create a Christmas display, sitting back someone drinking, you know, Chevis Regal, right, there. Or, you know, having a card party with beer all over. But that would be the window display, and that would take the whole window, and you could still put up 25 percent of signs. So the question is, what constitutes the window display? So we'd have to look at what a window display is. I mean, you could have a simple display of just, you know, a pizza in the window, but you could also have the entire window display. So what does that mean?
Well, I guess we can talk about it from a dimensional perspective. I mean, when you talk about sign versus display, sign is two-dimensional. A display could be potentially three-dimensional. Councilman Kraft? But what I was saying regarding the liquor establishment and the cigarette establishments, it appeared to me that they're exempt from even the rules that apply below, and the section does not apply to that, you know, section four, where it talks about the 25 percent of the signs. I mean, at the end of the day, we're going to come up with the amendment. I don't think we have to turn this into the discussion around it, but the amendment should basically be, and what I'm proposing and asking and what we're going to put in, is that, you know, signs, two-dimensional signs posted on a window in front of a store, from a liquor as well as cigarette perspective, should cover less than 25 percent of the area on that particular window. And I don't know how we frame it and talk about it.
I don't know what to say.
But that's what I think we, we want to do. And, and that's not to talk about a display, because again, to me, a display is something that's, it's, it's three-day, it's, you know, it's-
Okay, well, and Councilman, when we get to that, we'll, it's noted, we'll, we'll work that out. Councilman Henry?
So, okay, I, I thought Councilman Kraft's illustration of a window display and the term of Saks was, was very helpful, because I'm thinking of specifically, there is an old Verizon building on York Road where it was an office building. It was not a retail establishment, but it had three display windows that they used to do window displays for, at the time, phone-related things. And I think maybe what we need to do is, we need to actually define window displays. But the important distinction for both Saks and Verizon is that a window display of the type that I think we're envisioning is not sitting in a window that is used by the outside world to view the operations of the business. And, and I raised that issue because the way it was explained to me, part of the point of the reason why there was a percentage of window covering in the first place, it was a public safety issue. It was so that people could look in and see into the business, and the police, you know, back in the days when they walked by, you know, the police could look into a business and make sure everything was going, was fine. So I think perhaps if we're going to define window displays, which I think we should,
Right.
We should also probably prohibit them in these type of commercial corridor storefronts, because that would defeat the purpose of opening up the window so that you can see in, if somebody could just build a box around their window and put a display in it such that you can't see into their business at all.
There are many, many fine retail establishments do that, including Saks Fifth Avenue, including, you know, the stores at the gallery downtown. If you look along Calvert Street, it is, it's boxed in, it has all the fancy clothes there. You cannot see into the business. That is a type of window display.
But I think, but I think we need to make a-
I think you're talking about alcohol, alcohol and cigarettes.
And, well, even, not even alcohol and cigarettes, but I think we can make a distinction between the kind of businesses that would be in a B1, I'm sorry, a C1 or a C2, that would be more neighborhood commercial, or commercial corridor, as opposed to a large retail establishment that would be in a downtown C4, C5.
I mean, that may work. I, I agree, we can define window display. This was something that was discussed in the drafting, and you may notice that we talked about the signage being in that zone from the glass to 12 inches back. Beyond that would be where your display is. So if it's in that first zone, up to 12 inches back, it counts about signage, because it's basically in the window. If it's further back, it's display.
I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to figure out how we do this in such a way that a merchant who right now is mostly covering their window with alcohol signs, when told they can't do that, but if they put a piece of plyboard 18 inches back from their window and cover that with alcohol signs, that would be, that, that would be perfectly allowable. And that's the, that's the loophole I want to make sure we don't create.
Okay.
Um-
Hillary?
Uh, Mr. Chair, thank you. I just wanted to be clear for the record that 17602 that addresses alcoholic beverage and cigarette advertising is in addition to all the existing rules. And the way that ends up operating is saying that if you're otherwise allowed as a sign, based on height and area, you can't advertise alcohol and cigarettes unless you're on the license premise. So what this would do is, for example, say there's an existing billboard up over 95 owned by Clear Channel, they can put any content they want on it, but they can't put alcohol and tobacco. So that, I mean, that's how it effectively operates. So I just wanted to be clear there, because I, it sounded from one of the council person's questions, that they were nervous that this didn't, that this became an exemption to the 25 percent, or the temporary, or the other thing, and it's not. It's in addition to.
Some, some of our colleagues are not as familiar with the original fight to keep alcohol and tobacco off of billboards as others.
Okay. I, I have, I have one question. My concern is that, and I know that Councilwoman Middleton has it probably worse than, than other districts, but there's taverns now that seven-day license that have segregated their packaged goods to where, on the windows, they are, the bars, the taverns, I think it's illegal, that they have all these signs, like a liquor store has. What, what avenue, what suggestions you recommend, Dave? I mean, I'm putting something in there. It's like the, we talked about the last, the last work session of square footage and how much they take in. But my, my concern is, these, these taverns, and I have four of them in my district now, have taken the window, and now it looks like a liquor store. They have all the advertisements for alcohol.
I think that would go in the standards for taverns, which would be Title 14, let me find the right section, Title 14 dash 336, Taverns on page 231.
What is that, three?
Since those would be standards unique to taverns, to, page 231, 14 dash 336, and I'm not sure, you know, we talked about the floor area, which we talked about a couple meetings ago, for these taverns, and I think, I guess within the, the law, what we could do there in terms of limiting the signage, if I understand it, for a tavern-
That's the right place to put it.
So that it looks a little less like a liquor store. I mean, is that's kind of what you're saying?
Yes, it'd be a bar. It's a tavern, not a-
Would that be permissible under the-
Yeah, I mean, I think if you, as I'm understanding it, your current Title 17 has size, height, and sort of window occupation as overarching rules for all signs. So if you've got an establishment that is plastering its window with signs of any kind, I mean, it sounds like it's an enforcement issue.
Well, no, no. If I'm correct, taverns aren't supposed to have any liquor advertising whatsoever.
I think what, if I understand it, Hillary, I think the issue would be, if you have a tavern, even, that, even if they're following the law by limiting their signs to 25 percent, they still give off the look of a liquor store.
Right, right.
And the council's asking that that uniquely to taverns be prohibited, since their primary use is intended to be-
Not even-
-a liquor store, I mean, a tavern.
Right. I mean, it, I will definitely look into it in conjunction with the, you know, how much can you legally restrict signs specific to alcohol and tobacco? You know, obviously, you have an existing prohibition for general advertising, but once you get to the premise that sells the product, you have to make sure that you're, you know, not discriminating against that versus something else in a way that's constitutionally impermissible, and that we'll look into it.
That's the other point, because I know, I know that from owning a tavern, you could put like a neon sign, like-
Beer.
-open a coarse light, but you could not be putting those signs up, like a case of beer for a certain price, or packaged goods.
Right.
You weren't allowed to do that. And they're doing that now. I know that's an enforcement, but I don't want them to fall into this 25 foot.
So that prohibition against doing it today is most likely with their liquor license? Because I don't think that's in zoning currently.
I, I mean, it could be within their liquor license. I, you know, I can also look at that.
Can we find that out?
Sure.
So I think if we, in, in the section that I referred to on page 231, essentially, what we did here is mirror the zoning code to the liquor license. The liquor law says primarily, we said 50 percent. So if there is something that maybe we also mirror the sign restriction, so that basically you're, you're hitting people in two places, I think.
So Hillary, you're going to get back to us on that, to the committee?
Okay.
Councilwoman Middleton?
I just want to say, I think our goal is trying to improve the aesthetics of, of the neighborhood. These are the kind of complaints that we get in on a daily basis of that particular liquor store or convenience store in the community that's not, we, you know, we have certain zoning codes for, you know, the housing, whether it's single-family home, row houses, but we need to, these, these establishments are within those communities as well, and they're, they're eyesores, and they're not following the rules.
Right.
And, you know, the business, the businesses want to be a part of the community. They need to follow some of those aesthetic rules as well.
That's right. It's a quality of, quality of life in the neighborhood.
So, right. So that's one of the reasons I had mentioned about this 25 percent thing. Look, it hasn't, of course, it's kind of enforcement, but it hasn't, it still hasn't been working. And maybe we need, that's why I said, maybe we need to think about lowering it to 15 percent or so. That's, that could be another avenue to reach.
Um, I, I think, from my experience, and Councilman Henry's correct, that the enforcement really is a challenge with these types of things. Maybe we can bring some pictures that have some dimension, so the council knows, what does a real 25 percent look like? Because I suspect the ones that you're out there saying are hideous are probably well over.
Yes.
You know, if we put some tape measures out there, that may help find that right number.
Okay.
75 percent are over in my district.
Probably. Okay.
Okay. Now, we are, we are, anyone else on page 294 in the audience? Page 295?
I'd like to just say one thing, if I could.
Yes.
If we didn't have any signs allowed, it would be very easy to enforce, because it'd be obvious. The problem is, and there's so many complaints about this, this is the only chance we really have to look at what a mess it is in neighborhoods with these signs. And it's ridiculous. And it, and even if a place is operating in a neighbor-friendly way, if, if they are, if they have these signs jammed into their window, you know they're not. You know that they have isolated themselves in more ways than one from the community they are asking to support their livelihood. It's an insult in the face of the host neighborhood. And me, I would say zero signs in windows. And then, you know, I know that's not possible, and if it ran the gamut where the liquor stores, if, if you did the liquor stores, you'd have to do all stores, then-
So be it.
We, well, I, you say that until you think about the impact. But if we could just take these signs out of these liquor establishments and these corner grocery stores, and just enforce that, it would improve neighborhoods so much, and improve people's moods who live in neighborhoods and feel like, as if they're being slapped in the face every time they walk down the street. I had to, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, it's just like a speech. It's wrong.
All right.
Can I just add one thing?
And then, yeah, when you finish that, then-
And also, this is how, this is where they're doing a lot of their drug exchanges because, inside these places.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's all paced up. If, um, the Police Department would love this change as well, because when they come to the liquor hearings, that's the first thing that I hear them say, well, I can't see from my car in those places for, for the public safety of the individual that's going in there to get their things. It's, that's the first thing that comes out of every police officer's mouth when they're testifying.
Yeah, I think we will, we'll go back and look at Title 14, both the liquors, the taverns and the liquor stores, to see what our flexibility is on standards there that go over and above, you know, other retail establishments. And if we can come up with something that the Law Department-
Okay, that would be good.
-can work with.
We're gonna, we're gonna-
But I think what I'm hearing is an openness, a transparency.
Okay.
Yes.
We're gonna conclude with Mayor, Councilwoman Clark, then we're gonna move on.
Oh. I just want to say one thing to back up my colleague, Councilwoman Middleton, and it is that when we had, when we had the last killing, the most recent killing at Waugh Brothers in, on Greenmount Avenue, the all-night carryout, the neighborhoods leaders came together, and the Police Department, and, and came up with standards for Waus. And one of the first standards was, take down the signs so we, the police, and we, the public, can see inside your place, so we know what's going on. They open late in the afternoon, so most of their operational hours are after dark, and, and so they did it. They've done it. And it, it is great. It doesn't, it looks better, because you can look in. You don't feel it's a dangerous place. Thank you.
295?
Oh, oh, man.
295?
Billboards.
I didn't do it.
Councilman Henry, you have something on billboards? You raised your hand.
We spent longer on the previous section than I intended.
We spent longer on the previous section than I intended to, or I expected to, sir, so I'll restrain myself for tonight.
Thank you very, appreciate it, two ninety, two ninety-five? Page two ninety, two ninety-six, Councilwoman Clark, do you have amendments, two ninety-six, eleven through, eleven and twelve?
I do, uh, Mr. Chairman, page two ninety-six, lines eleven and twelve, um, this is about moving or...
That's four through eighteen, four through eighteen.
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped, sorry, four through eighteen, um, moving or flashing signs, that's just the major section, under that, the amendment five, um, I'm sorry, just a minute, lines eleven and twelve, um, I would add cer, I would add to the following, it says, in the non-residential districts, subsection A, oh, excuse me.
You forgot the zoning code.
Yeah, no, no, no. This, these requirements were just being applied to non-residential districts, I'm expanding who they apply to, to C-one, V-C, and I-M-U.
So you're adding...
So I'm saying, in the non-residential, the C-one and C-one-V-C, I meant to say, and I-M-U districts, subsection A does not apply to certain signs, so it would not apply to the signs listed, uh, lines thirteen to eighteen, okay?
I'm not sure if that's necessary to achieve what you're trying to achieve, but, because basically, it starts with, you can't do these signs
Right.
Anywhere, and then the only exceptions are below, and these below uses are not uses permitted in residential areas, so, but I guess there's no real harm there.
Yeah, okay, all right, I got that one, so, anyone else on?
No, no, let me make sure, I want to be straight about what we're doing here, there are gen, there are general prohibitions about moving and flashing signs.
Right.
All right, there are exceptions to the prohibitions.
Right.
I am adding to the districts where the, that are pro, where these signs are prohibited.
Okay.
Where these signs are prohibited, it already says they're pre-prohibited. It already in indicates you can't put them in a residential district, I'm adding non-residential districts that I'd like to put in to that protection.
Well, you could just delete the whole section of exceptions, it sounds like that's what you're doing.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
But that would not allow any barber poles on Main Street.
I don't, I don't care if, I'm not worried about the barber poles, I just don't want them, I really don't care about the barber poles at all, I'm more concerned about indoor entertainment marquees, electronic message signs, scrolling newscast signs, et cetera, I don't want them in, I don't want them in I-M-U, I don't want them in C-one slash C-one-V-C.
Okay.
That's what, that's my intention, now, sometimes the language of this draft and of codes in general is, is confusing and not clear, it's the nature of the beast, my intention here is to get C-one, C-one-V-C, and I-M-U out of these moving signs, I don't care if there are barber poles in, in a I-M-U or a C-one, but it happens to be in a list with other things that I think are pretty advanced commercial.
Okay, that's...
Okay. Thank you.
All right, um, also, anyone else on page two ninety-six? Okay, we are now on page two ninety-seven, Councilwoman Clark, two ninety-seven, lines two through five.
Right. You have cases, all right, so, general prohibition, I'm, I'm talking about page two ninety-seven, lines two to five, these are snipe signs, that's what they're called, I don't know what that means, but I presume it's a term of art.
What, what snipe signs, definition of snipe signs is, anyone?
I'd have to go back, I don't recall right at this moment, um...
Councilman Henry, yeah.
To his brillig and his spidey toes, to Dyer and Gimble in the way, oh, Mimsy with the bore groves, graves, and the bone rats outgraved.
Okay, that's, that's...
I think, I don't remember snipe.
Let's, let's move forward.
We probably need to add a definition, but my recollection is it recalls to sort of non-sign signs, like when you paint on stuff, but I will lift that up.
That's what we're talking about, all right, so, may I?
Hillary?
Uh, so these, just to clarify, the, the current city code prohibits the placement of any sign on city property by someone other than the city or our agent, so this would be for all private property, just to be clear. Right, this, this would, right, because we already have a city code provision elsewhere that says, you know, you can't put up, you know, come to my bar mitzvah on the front of City Hall, I mean, you can't put, a, a private person can't put a sign on public property, so, you know, where it says utility pole, hydrant, bridge, sidewalk, curb, these are going to have to be by, you know, by operation of the, the other parts of city co- code, this leaves only those things not owned by the city, because you can't put a sign on city property unless the city gives you permission, so...
Well, I have an amendment that says you can get a permit, that's what I'm, that's, let's talk, can we talk about that, Mr. Chairman, can I, all right, like, like in Waverly, the nine oh one youth arts program painted, um, storm inlets as a way of raising awareness of, along the streets, awareness of, you know, don't throw trash down here, it goes to the bay, and they drew, you know, like sea fe, sea creatures to say, this is going to the water, so, and, and, um, the president of the RNA was just talking about, really, a brilliant, mechanical sweeping, homemade sign program that is copied by neighborhoods now all over the city, so what I was saying in my amendment was, I'm adding, except for environmental and safety projects, approved and granted permits by the city of Baltimore, because I'm taking you at, no, I hear you.
Right.
I hear what you're saying, I'm reading this as if it's prohibiting posting of mechanical sweeping signs on a tree, uh, painting of, uh, storm drains on a road and curb in a neighborhood, so I'm...
Well, I don't think the zoning code is, even if you fixed it here...
So you're telling me that's not where to do this?
Well, you could do it here, but
I'd like to...
Here, you can do it here, but all it's going to do is allow it on non-city-owned property, because there's already provisions in the code that governs city property and posting signs on them that aren't the zoning code, I mean, we own, the city owns city property, so it already has rules, I think it's...
But it talks about, it talks about utility poles, hydrants, bridges, like, most people don't have those things on their, behind their row house.
Well, I mean, what I'm saying...
The trajectory, I mean, you just hear what I'm saying?
I do, but the, but, but by definition, there's a different provision in city code, I think it's in, I can't, I think it's in article, the, the police ordinances, section nineteen, or article nineteen of the city code, it prohibits anyone from placing a sign on city-owned property, it has nothing to do with zoning, it's just, we own the pole, you can't put your sign there, so...
We sell houses, I mean, it's, yes.
Right, exactly, so if you want people to be able to put signs on city property for the kinds of safety and environmental projects,
Yeah, yeah, amend that.
Make sure you amend that also, because this will...
Then what's this doing here, I mean, it's telling you about, it's talking about private prop, how many privately, not a public park now, how many privately, how many privately-owned hydrants, it looks a utility pole?
It may be too broad, but again, the intention is, um, and, you know, fortunately, we don't see a lot of these in Baltimore, but people painting every part of their fence, their rocks, their trash cans or whatever with some commercial message.
I think that's cool.
And BGE or other utilities could own poles that we don't, that the city doesn't own.
All right.
Um, I don't know about hydrants, but, but certainly you could have a, you know, privately-owned bridge, sidewalk, or curb, if it's perhaps in a development where, you know, they didn't deed it back to the city.
Leola owns a bridge over Charles Street.
So...
Okay, I surrender, I, I just, what I care about is, what I wrote...
You'd probably have to do it in both places.
Add it here and then add it elsewhere.
Okay, Councilman Henry?
That, that was the first part, I was just going to say, could we just reference that other section of code and say, you know, unless as otherwise provided in blah, 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 uh, but then the other thing is, I wanted to apologize, it turns out actually it's the snark that is from, from Louis Carroll, not the snipe, I was getting those two confused.
Okay.
Close.
Snipe is actually an eastern shorebird, uh, that, and there's also snipe hunting, but we could talk about that later.
Yeah.
Okay, um, anyone else on page two ninety-six? Oh, two ninety, anyone else on page two ninety-seven? Two ninety-seven? To, page two ninety-eight? Page two ninety-eight? Ms. Floyd?
I don't come in again till three oh three, two, thank God.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, on the section that begins on line one and goes to line thirty-two, attention-getting devices. Um, yeah, I, I have some real big questions about this whole section, I think, um, first of all, it, it seems to be saying that you wouldn't be able to, um, seems to be referring to things that a lot of us have just in a matter of course, a little squiggly thing that hangs from the, from the, from the por, ceiling of the porch, um, that would be a spinner maybe, or something like that, or a flag that people get to adorn their properties, but I think, and, and the whole section is, I, I really don't know what to make, for instance, of lines thirteen and fourteen, I don't know what that's supposed to mean the way it's written, but I think the overall concern with Mr. Willis, I'm glad he's here tonight, um, I, I was trying to look at the definition of a sign, because this is talking about attention-getting devices, and they don't use the word sign here, and then you look at the definition of sign in the code, the one that is in the first section, and it says that art that contains no commercial message is not a sign, so it seems like, in some ways, this is conflicting with that, because it seems like it's talking about things that really aren't signs, but trying to regulate them in the signage section, there seems to be some problem here.
This is a, um, something new that came up in our drafting, um, it was a recommendation from our consultant, it landed here because we didn't really have, you know, anything else to call it, but it, and again, in Baltimore, it hasn't been as big an issue maybe as elsewhere, though we do get a lot of them, but in other jurisdictions, you know, there's a lot of these, you know, blow-up, wavy things, you know, these huge commercial items, and it's a big issue and a cause for concern, so that's why this was inserted, if this is not something the council wants to regulate, this section could be deleted, um, we didn't really have a better place for it than signs, because they essentially act as signs, and that's why it's defined differently.
Yeah.
But again, we'll leave that to the committee.
Okay, um, because, go ahead.
Just, I, it's, 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 there's something wrong about it, um, you know...
This came from the consultant that was playing the part.
Yeah, in other parts of the country, it's been a bigger issue, and they recommended we include this.
I mean, the, the committee will, will work on that, because I see, I agree with, uh, what she's, what Ms. Floyd's saying, I see the word balloon, so that means, like with, um, I know there's some exclusions here, you know, but I'm, I'm saying that, uh, you know, so if you go out and you buy balloons, if I'm saying this correctly, and you went for Valentine Day, or, or fortieth birthday, or fiftieth birthday, you're saying that, um, that's, that's, that's not allowable?
It's the definition.
That's a definition?
No, no, there's just regulations, not, they're never not allowable.
Well, but...
Well, actually, it says, yeah, yeah, if, if...
Require a permit for, yeah, yeah.
Well, actually, what I was going to ask was, it says in general, attention-getting devices require a permit and are allowed for non-residential uses in the C-three and C-four district.
Right, subject to the regulations.
Right, since our zoning code is the way it is, that means that since we say they're allowed in C-three and C-four, then they're not allowed anywhere else, right? Okay, right, so, um, it, I don't know what to call these, if they're, if this counts as a balloon, or if this counts as an inflatable sign, but I see, I think most commonly at car places, these giant, like vaguely humanoid figures that are connected to a fan, right, so, that's kind of funny at a car place, but I would not really like to see one in front of a carryout, so, right, okay, so I see, so I, hence, hence I'm seeing the, but my, my question would be, uh, would you feel like maybe we could put a little bit more limitation on the C-three one, because there are oftentimes C-threes mixed in to commercial corridors, um, and I was wondering if maybe we could make it clear that, like, if it was in C-three, it would have to be a business that had a square footage over ten thousand square feet, or something, something to make it clear that, um, it's because the business itself is a large aried business, that this kind of thing can sit in and grab attention without actually being, uh, too much in a more congested commercial area.
C-three, C-three as mapped in the, in this code is really just shopping centers, you know, your Reisterstown Plaza, that sort of thing, um, so...
So I have no C-three on York, on the York Road.
I don't believe you have C-three on York Road.
Okay, I, I knew, I know I had some B-three scattered here now.
Right, but this changed it, they didn't automatically, that C-three is really shopping centers.
As long as it's not on corridors, then that's probably, okay, then, hello?
And maybe to address the concern about balloons or, or
Might want to look...
Spinning things on front porches, um, maybe the exclusions should get expanded?
They clean up the, clean that up.
You know, so that it's clear that we're not talking about your mobile on your front porch or something?
Hillary?
I was thinking, um, perhaps put the word promotional on line four between any and everything else, so it's clear that what we're looking at are promotional devices, not personal
Right.
Birthday party, you know, balloons, that kind of personal thing, we're looking for, like, they're promoting some sort of product.
That works for me.
That works for me.
Okay, okay, all right. What about, I know this sounds crazy, but, some years, a few years back, they, they brought down in front of City Hall a giant rat. So, would they have to get a permit for that? Don't they, they got a, they don't need a permit for that?
No, I mean, that wouldn't be a zoning issue if it's not affixed somehow to the land.
So if they, if that was to happen anywhere, and I, I shouldn't say City Hall, but some of the unions, some, some entities, scratch out unions, too, it's a long day, but, any entity that has a giant rat, they would have to get a permit if it's like a float or something?
I mean, I think I could build a giant rat and, and walk with it to my job. I mean, I, you know, it, it's a question of, do we have sort of the police power to regulate that kind of free speech? And if it's not going to be permanent and affixed to the land, it wouldn't be in the zoning code to do it, it'd be somewhere else. And then it's a question of, you know, is it reasonable and content neutral?
Okay, all right. So we are, okay, thank you.
Wouldn't that be like carrying coals to Newcastle?
Okay, um, we're still on page 298? 298?
I don't have anything till-
Okay, page, uh, 299? Page 299? Okay, uh, we're on page 300? Counsel, page 300?
Oh, yes.
I need, no, you're, you're 302. Page 300? 301? No, you're not 301 either. 301? Okay, now I'm gonna counsel Clark. Page 302 and 303, Councilwoman Clark?
We're talking here about electronic message signs, pages 302 and 303. In Amendment 7 on your sheets, uh, page 302, lines 3 to 5, freestanding, I, I have deleted certain areas, let me just make sure I've got my, let me do it right. I have deleted certain areas from having electronic message signs as allowed uses. So I'm deleting from, from, from electronic message signs as permitted, um, open space, C1, Commercial 1, C1VC, Commercial Village Center. C1E, that's Entertainment Zone, and the rest of the ones that are listed as allowed. So basically, the impact of this, of this amendment would be to remove open space districts and C1 districts, and C, um, excuse me, C1 Village Center and C2, I'm sorry, um, from being allowed by right to have electronic message signs.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, then, down the page, um, down the, Amendment 8. This has to do with the size of electronic message components.
920 to 23.
It is, page 302, lines 20 to 23, and I'm changing it so it says, "The electronic message component may not exceed 10 square feet in area, except in the C1E," that's Entertainment Commercial District, "where the maximum size is limited to 6 square feet in area." In other words, I have removed C1 and C1VC. No, I didn't remove open space from this provision.
All right.
I, I removed them from this, um, provision, so that they're, they have smaller signs, or, so they, they're out of this universe of electronic message signs. They're just taken out of this world.
It's noted.
Thank you.
Second, Counselman Henry? I'm waiting for page 306.
Okay, we are now on page, uh, anyone else on 302? We are now on page 303? Page 303?
Oh, I have one.
We're 303?
Um, no, no.
30, 303, 304? Page 304?
Um, next one's eight.
305? Anyone on 305? We're now on page 306?
Ding.
Counselman Henry?
Thank you. This is actually, uh, the very top, lines 1 and 2 of 306, it's the continuation of 17 dash 0808, neighborhood identification signs. Uh, I, I'm gonna have to ask for an expansion of the number of neighborhood identification signs per neighborhood. I have one large neighborhood that I know has four, and it would be hard for me to explain why any other neighborhood similarly sized could not put up more in the future. I'd like to expand that to, I'd like to amend the two to four. The idea, the rationale being, basically, you could put one on each side of the neighborhood.
Good save.
Yeah.
Okay.
Contact.
All right.
Yeah.
You won that.
Four.
Anyone else on page 306? 306? 307? 307? Now we're on page 308 and 309? Councilwoman Clark?
Thank you. Basically, under residential identification signs, pages 308 and 309, that's what we're doing now, um, I'm proposing to amend to include all residential districts in the same sign standards, like, um, from R1A to R10. And then I have a series of amendments. Page 308, lines 16 and 17, I'm just doing what I just said, I'm, instead of, I'm adding R9 and R10 to the residential areas covered. In other words, this amendment is just putting all residential districts in the same sign standards. Next, I'm amending to reduce the maximum square footage and height of residential identification signs, and that is Amendment 10, where you'll see I'm reducing them from 15 to 9 square feet in area, and directly aluminum signs in residential are limited to, to 6 square feet, instead of the recommended 12 square feet. That's page 308, lines 20 and 22. That's what it is. Um, page 308, line 23?
Yes.
Along the same, along the same theme, freestanding residential identification signs are limited to, it's, it's recommended 6, I'm amending, proposing 3 feet in height. Um, I'm, oh no, next page.
That's next page. Do we have any response on those amendments?
I'm saying, all under the same idea of signs, same for all residential districts.
Again, I think this is up to the council, but, uh, R9 and R10 are very different districts, as written in this code. They are really limited to the apartment buildings, we eliminated the R9 rowhouse areas, um, so these would be used in very limited, uh, areas, and, um, I think we would find them to be fairly restrictive as amended, and likely to make almost every apartment sign non-conforming.
Well, let, let me just say one thing about that, although more, the idea is that higher the residential number, the more units per acre, therefore, yes, R9 and R10 have more units per acre, or they're allowed, than R1A, or R3. But it also means that this, these are the neighborhoods with the very small rowhouses per acre, so you could argue this both ways. In many respects, you have smaller, more densely built rowhouse neighborhoods in these areas, because you have more units per acre.
Well, as mapped, we did not map, under this code, any rowhouses in R9 or R10. We actually took all of the R9 rowhouses in the city and took them down to R8. Okay, well, that's good. Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton?
Um, sorry, Mr. Chair, I know you don't like going back, but we went pretty fast. I want to go back to the neighborhood identification sign.
What page you want? What page?
306.
306. The 6 through 9 that talks about the encroachment, and I, where it says, "The neighborhood identification signs are allowed in the public right-of-way, subject to review and approval by the Director of Planning and Department of Transportation." I think you should also maybe add parks, because we have, since we're, I'll give some example, like around Stony Run and the bike trails, and a lot, a lot of those pathways are also near neighborhoods, so somehow, parks should be involved, and also, um, the city council members should kind of be notified in a part of, part of this as well, at least for notification that this is happening, certain neighborhood signs. And it, just, and I'm, just because of my experience in being involved in some signage that, you know, are taking place now, like around Coal Spring and the Silburn Arboreum and the Coal Spring community, um, parks is involved, I'm involved.
Okay.
You're not kidding.
Yeah. So, that's Councilwoman Milton's amendment?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So now we are back on, thank you, we are back on, we finished page 308, now we're on page 309, Councilwoman Clark?
I have three amendments, my final three amendments of Title 17, um, on this page, and it's about wall signs. Excuse me while I get to the right page. Yeah. Okay, wall signs, in general, wall signs are allowed for non-residential uses in all districts, subject to the following restrictions. Amendment 12, I'm amending to include R1A through R10. It's the same thing I'm doing in the other section. Uh, we're not there? Yes, we are, I think. I'm sorry, I'm on line 16 and 17 on 309. Basically, I'm, I'm changing dimensions, and I'm adding in, I'm putting in all the residential districts, so they all have the same signs, wall signs. Is there, is there any?
Yeah, with you.
Okay. Um, Amendment 13 is-
Limited to-
21 to 23, signs are limited, wall signs are limited to 12 square feet in area, that, that's my amendment, instead of 18 square feet, that are directly illuminate, that are, excuse me, wall signs are limited to 12 square feet in area, except for signs that are directly illuminated. Directly illuminated signs are limited to 9 square feet, I'm recommending. So I'm bringing down those dimensions from the draft. Um, and finally, Amendment 14, um, I'm amending this to be in sync with, um, the amendment, uh, two amendments above. Um, this, I'm, page is 20, I mean, lines 24 and 25 should change to eliminate R9 through R10, and, and to apply only to the OR district, which is office residential, like the tall office residential brownstone-type houses on, in Charles Village, on the main St. Paul, Charles Street. So, I'm, I'm removing the Rs from these provisions. This subsection applies to the OR district. And, and they're regulated, uh, by a, a reference, but I just took the residentials out of there. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Those are all my amendments.
Thank you. Um, I actually have a question, I hope on a follow-up, I can get some answers. Um, I would like to be provided with some examples, on this section we're talking about right now, the wall signs, 12, lines 12 through, well, I guess, maybe 23, or the section on R1A through R8. So we're talking about signage for non-residential uses in an R1A through an R8. So I'm trying to ask for, to be provided some examples of how this would even, what we, what we would be advertising, um, with a 6-foot-by-3-foot sign in, you know, in one, in one of these districts, and I, um, so I'm hoping I can get some examples, so I can go back and explain to people what, what this is, um, because I know, I know from looking at other parts of the code, it's not intended to apply to RMU, and it's not intended to apply to Neighborhood Commercial. So what is it intended to apply to?
It's intended to apply to apartment buildings that have, you know, the beauty shop on the ground floor, the convenience store, um, the examples that come to mind, I think, are more R9 off the top of my head, but, um, you know, I'm thinking the Hopkins Deli on 39th Street would be an example, um-
Of what?
I'm trying to think of an R8, or a, I mean, there's very few places, but there are some that have, uh, the old, um, you know, the Marylander used to have the Meatloaf Restaurant there, in the Marylander, you know, something like that. Yeah. Or the Broadview, um, those are examples, um, in R8, um, you know, there's certainly less of them, but I think there are some buildings that have, you know, a, a, some sort of ground-floor office, or things like that, and that's the only place that it would apply. Obviously, it does not exempt the, you know, owner from all the use regulations, it's just if you have this use, you can do the sign.
Ms. Floyd, does that satisfy your question? Because if it, if it doesn't, if it, if it doesn't, then can Planning, can you email Planning?
Yeah, I, I'm hoping that, yeah, I, it's, I, it does sound like it's more of an R9, R10 thing, but-
There are many others, but there would be some, and we'll just leave that.
So I think we'll follow up a little bit on that one.
Okay, all right. If you have any questions, just submit it to Planning. Thank you. Uh, 309, any, anyone else on 309? 310? Page 310? Page 311? 311? 312? And 313?
313.
Amen.
So what do we, where's my? Okay. Um, now, there's no date set for the next transform Baltimore, so our next work session on City Council Bill 12 dash 01523- council bill, 12-0152, transform Baltimore, zoning is to be announced at the next council meeting, which is next Monday, 23rd of February. I want to thank everyone for attending tonight's hearing. I got the weather report from Councilwoman Milton, that it's snowing outside, lay down, so please look around and see, make sure you take any of your belongings with you.
Occupation, though, that's further limiting.
Everyone have a good evening. Thank you.